Okay, so. One of the reasons we had this special meeting, there's only one thing on the agenda, and that is to continue general and legislative discussion about the items that are on that list. And if I remember correctly, I haven't even, it's been a little crazy here at work today. Can someone remind me where we are on this list? If I'm not mistaken, we were up to blight, and I think we did right of condemnation to Mark or Rafi, or could someone check? Tell me where you recall that we ended?
As far as I know, Liz, we hit every topic on things that we were looking for to help residents.
Yes.
Yep, so I have nothing else to provide.
Okay, so let's start at the top of the list. So Mobile Manufactured Home Advisory Council process for transparent legislative discussion. I think this is, having these special meetings is a first step to talking about this. Does anyone have any other comments with respect to more transparency within this commission committee?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess I'd like to, I can't tell at this point whether, where everybody is on the whole concept. And so I guess it would, it would certainly help me to understand better. What, I mean, my understanding was that we were trying to get ourselves back to a point where we had been before the, prior to the last session, in which we were, we would sort of put on the table and share things that we thought might be coming up during the session, particularly things that we might be initiating, and that, and that it could lead to a discussion of those things.
Okay.
It's, it's, and it might be the answer, nobody's thinking of anything, or nobody knows about anything. But the idea was to see if we could find a way, even on issues where we were going to have no agreement, to at least talk about them. And if there are areas where we were, where there was room for agreement, to talk about that also, just, you know, sort of exploring whether that was a possibility. That was what I thought this was all about. I'm not sure if it is or it isn't. And so that seemed to be that, that's item, you know, A1.
But, well, yeah, and I think one of the, one of the issues here was the, that the House Bill, the House Bill that was vetoed, that this council did not discuss it as a group, some of the proposed legislation with respect to mobile homes. So I think that's the number one thing on the list, is to have that discussion. That being said, I did receive an email yesterday saying they're going to be scheduling a special session for one or another date in November. But the email said, there's, there's no, there's nothing to tell you what we're going to be talking about yet. Does anyone know of any legislation that is being proposed that maybe we should talk about as? Rafi, I know you were involved with some of the, you and Dave Delory were involved in some of the discussions with Representative Martinez with respect to the House Bill 5002. Where are you with that?
No, Liz, Liz, you're mixing up two different bills.
You're confusing.
Of 5002 does not have anything about mobile home parks.
Oh, okay.
And there's no, but that makes a difference.
It's been a very busy day today, guys, so bear with me. But, all right, so we're going to talk about the House Bill that makes proposed changes to statutes regarding mobile manufactured homes. Are you aware of anything? Am I, how am I wrong?
Okay, I'm sorry. The first thing is, it's my understanding, we're not talking about the special session. I don't think there's any, we're talking about.
Okay, and I just said that I need to be.
Okay, but there is no bill on the table. The, the, nothing, the bill, the bill from last year did not pass. It wasn't vetoed, it didn't pass.
Okay, and I've already corrected myself on that. But where I am right now, it is my understanding that starting in December, there was some work that was already started with last year for this year's legislative session. So my question is, does anyone want to talk about anything that they're starting to work on for next year's legislative session?
I thought that was the list of the eight, of the, of the eight items. That's what I thought we were going to be doing, not talking about last year's bill, but talking about where we were going forward. There, there is no bill that anybody's introducing at this point in time, as far as I know. But there are things people may be thinking about. And, and, and I don't know that anybody is, is proposing last year's bill again. So I don't think we would start with last year's bill.
Can, can I jump in here again, or for, for a minute? Rafi's, what Rafi just said is, my understanding is, we were going to discuss these things on the list today. But because in the interest of transparency, we don't, and we do not know what the legislature is planning, but I'm going to tell you that we have heard, we have heard that some legislatures are interested in addition to a possible proposed rent mediation statute, that there's going to be some kind of changes to fair rent commissions that might impact mobile home parks. I do not know, I have tried to, I have reached out to my legislature, legislator about a week ago, and I haven't heard anything back. I don't know what they're planning. I don't know whether it's going to be town by town, whether it's going to be some sort of change to statewide board, I don't know whether it's going to be used, trying to use the cogs. We don't know. But that is being, that, there's been some, that's been kicked around almost since the end of the last session. And then you see the, the rent mediation statutes on our list today, and also the inspection program for fire hydrants and utility poles. And let's see, there was something else. I'm not prepared for this because I thought it was going to be later. It'll come to me.
All right, so, so here's what, I'm going to back this up, and we're going to start with the first thing on the list. So zoning. So I think we're all good on the transparent. So zoning, the last time, the key points that we discussed were, the park owners face resistance from towns when promoting newer expanded parks, and statute 830G is often used but seen as adversarial. Some suggestions were made at the last meeting that says state level legislation to prevent towns from banning mobile home parks. Encourage town to adopt zoning regulation that allow parks by rights. Consider mobile home parks as a form of a multifamily housing and explore attorney general involvement to enforce existing anti-discrimination zoning laws. Does anyone want to have any further discussion about that? Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, is it, what? Liz, is, is that simply a list of ideas, or is that something that anybody actually is thinking of proposing?
It was discussed at our last meeting in, in the draft minutes. Because we, we actually did get, you know, we, we actually talked about, you know, we got to quite a few of these things, but we wanted to continue discussion on them. So my question is, with respect to zoning, those are the things we discussed at the last meeting. And does anyone want to discuss them further? Or where this council might go to talk about some of these things?
I, I think this is a very important issue for both, for both residents and park owners. Zoning, zoning is an issue for mobile home parks, as near as I can tell, across the country. I, I have run across, I think it was Florida, a news, a news report from Florida within the last two weeks, and I'm sorry I'm not ready, wherein they made some new regulations about constructing new mobile home parks. And it was a change, was a change that I think, I can try to find it while I'm online here. I think it was to, again, this is a controversial issue, to take away some of the powers of local zoning, zoning boards. I can try to check, I can try to check on that while, while we're in the meeting. But that's an issue, that's an issue. I mean, my, my town has four, four mobile home parks. And they've been in existence, I believe, since before zoning was enacted. And now they're prohibited. And it's, Liz, you must know that that's an issue in Connecticut. And I, it's a contra, it's a very controversial issue. But I, I think the council should discuss it as, as something that we could figure out some common ground to make a proposal on.
I mean, I don't think that anyone's, and yeah, I mean, you know, zoning regulations can be, some towns zoning regulations are very, very outdated. You have small towns with no staff, they're not brought up to speed. The issue that I see with zoning is, each town is different. Some towns have public infrastructure, some towns do not. So regulations for mobile manufactured home parks, which the town of Motville has, and were written about 10 years ago, you know, say, a minimum of 10 acres, and you shall have public water. There's a lot of towns, let's say in southeastern Connecticut, that don't have the availability of public utilities, which makes, which makes this a difficult, but I would agree that, you know, if, if the site conditions were right, it should be allowed as a right. I, I'm not opposed to that at all. And, you know, the problem is crafting regulations that will work in your, your specific town. So trying to get some state level legislation, you know, I think it's a great idea. But I don't know how that would fly, you know, with regional planning agencies and/or individual Connecticut towns, because each town is so different. Ledger, we have public water in some places. We have barely public sewer in any places in, in Ledger. So to be able to do a development like they did, the Sun Communities, the, the, did over in Motville, which it was Jensen's at the time, actually. They wrote it so that they had to run a water line for public water. And the regulations were specifically written to work within Motville's infrastructure. So statewide legislation, I'm not sure how we would go about doing that, to be honest with you. And I welcome any ideas. I think it's a great idea to not require special use permits, although in Motville, they were required by special use permits. But even if they were required with a, with a site plan approval only, which is a quote unquote by right use, permitted use in the zone without a special permit or special exception, not every town's going to be able to, you know, you know, realistically, be able to adopt said regulations.
Why does it have to be on, why does it have to be on public water? Why can't you put a well in, like, half of my communities are on well systems?
I, like I said, like I'm telling you, this was Motville, that they said that they did not want it without public water. So maybe these are things that the council could put forward, is that, you know, not requiring that it be hooked up to public utilities.
Well, I think that's what we're saying, Liz. I think, you know, when Dave, when Dave says come to some common ground, I, I don't know what common ground is. Either we want to promote this industry here in the state of Connecticut. No, no, wait, let me finish. If we want to promote this industry in the state of Connecticut, there's no common ground. We either, we either need to expand or we contract, right? So if you're not growing, you're dying. That, that's, in every industry, if you're not expanding, you're reducing, right? So you'll, you'll have all the parks pulled up and go away. And then what'll be left will be whatever's left, but there will be no expansion. Towns, you're wearing your town hat, and I can, I can see, I can see it, and I appreciate it for sure. But we either can eliminate, and this isn't just for mobile home parks either. There has to be an elimination of the bureaucracy within the towns to expand housing, affordable or otherwise. And so I, I just, I don't think this is hard for us to say that we're all for it. And if there's people on this call that aren't for, by reducing the, the things that are in the way of expanding our industry, then we should just stop the calls because there's nothing else to talk about. It will, everything else will just become adversarial. It'll be thus, us against them. And there'll be no more of these. And if there's no more of these, I don't want to do this anymore, because I can't stay static, right? So what we need is to, to stop letting the towns push us around. And I know you're wearing your town hat, so please don't, this is not personal, because I know for a fact that you, you have approved, you've approved, you've approved parks that I know of, and you did what you had to do to get there, and I'm fine with that. But, you know, we have residents, abutting residents that have nothing to do with anything, have the ability to file injunctions to stop production of a park after it's already been approved, under the 830 statute, who had to be bought out at $400,000 so they could feel good about themselves because they stole land through adverse possession. And if we don't eliminate that stuff, let's just close up this council, because there's nothing else to talk about. Everything else that's left will just be adversarial.
And I would agree with that. If the state, now, the state put regulations into effect under 8-2 that a town may not, you know, treat a mobile manufactured home on a standalone lot any different than a single family home, but they added except at 22 feet wide, and so on and so forth. So I would agree that if the state, that's, I think that's something everyone here on this call would agree that the state could put some legislation in that prohibits towns from, you know, requiring anything other than a site plan approval, and, you know, show that you comply with public health code.
Without using 830G, by the way. Right, I don't want to use that statute, because actually that statute then contradicts the statute that says that all my rents have to be the same. Because in an 830G scenario, rents won't be the same by law.
No, and I would agree that legislation that require towns to adopt zoning regulations that make it, you know, less arduous to have a mobile manufactured home park is what's going to be needed, because I don't want to say this in a bad way. I, I really love my job, I love working for towns. But sometimes you get very, and, and I think Mark will be able to attest to this, you get very, very, very small, you get these very organized opposition groups to just about any kind of multifamily, mobile manufactured home parks. I saw it here in Ledger when there was an 830G one. And what happens is, and, and, you know, I would say this on the record to any commission, what happens is these 100 or 200 people, which is a very small percentage of Ledger's 15,000 population, come out in force, and I believe they intimidate the commissioners. And the commissioners have denied applications that I feel actually did mean our regulations because they're intimidated by the crowd. These are volunteers, they see these people in the grocery store, they see these people at the soccer games. So if there was legislation, I think that's the only way it's going to happen. And, and then in that case, the commissions will have to drop regulations that allow these by right and not on public infrastructure. And as long as they meet public health code, doesn't matter if you have individual septic systems. It doesn't matter if you have a, depending on the size, an onsite wastewater treatment facility approved by DPH. I think that's the only way it's going to happen, because small towns are set in their ways. And small towns are very much not in my backyarders. We have a new, a new saying that someone talked, said to me, is cave people, citizens against virtually everything. And I think in many small towns, that's what we planners, which are trying to, as you said, allow mobile manufactured home parks to grow, are, people are coming out. They, they're, I'm not sure what they're afraid of. But this is what we planners run into with respect to commissions. Commissions are, you know, the public gets up and says, this is not what we want, and you can't have it. And the commissions will deny applications, they'll deny regulation amendments. So I, and from my world, it's very frustrating. So I think, I think that's one thing, and that it seems every single person on this call is in favor of some state legislation regarding mobile manufactured home parks. Can we say that's common?
Liz, yes, I think it's common ground, but I need to correct something I said earlier, because I, I realized that what I said wasn't entirely accurate. In House Bill 5002, and I think we talked briefly about it at the last meeting, was a provision that removed the 22-foot requirement.
That's correct.
Okay, now, that was vetoed, that was vetoed, because the whole bill was vetoed. To my knowledge, that's not a controversial section. And there's, there is reason to believe that if they, if they bring up, if they try and bring 5002 back in the special session, my hope would be that they would not, that they would keep that, that they would put that in, whatever is the compromise they produce. Because the compromise, because the reason the bill got vetoed was not because of that section. If that's something, okay, let me finish the thought. If that's something that we as a group think would make sense, we don't necessarily have to endorse it as a group, but it would make sense that separately, we should find a way to let, you know, the, the park owners, for example, have a lobbyist. It would be helpful if their lobbyist let people in house leadership know that it's really important to keep that section in the bill. That would be helpful, because then it sends a message that, that, that that's something that's, that's important. And that's, and, and if we, if we can determine just from our talking about it, that that's, that that's a common ground issue, that we're all in favor. So that's one thing that we can do, that does impact, might be impacted by the special session. The second thing, though, is looking ahead to 2026. If there are things that might be stronger than that, I mean, you were talking about as, as of right development, then, again, that's an area where it seems to me, everybody on the council might well be in agreement. Then, but then we need to shape it. And then we need to have a conversation among ourselves, either at our quarterly meetings, or I think in a subcommittee meeting, to say, what exactly is it we would want such a bill to say? What, essentially, it'd be at least to write the outlines of the content of the bill. Are we talking about a bill about water and water systems? Are we talking about a, a bill of zoning as a right? Are we talking about, about how would it be different from what's already in 8-2? We need to have that on, and we're just saying for one issue, we had a list of a bunch of issues. But for that issue, we need to have a conversation among ourselves in a way that allows us to figure out what it is we actually want. It's, it's one thing to say, take something that's already been written by somebody else and, and get it through the special session, because it's already been approved by both the House and the Senate. But the governor vetoed it. So when you, if you send another bill back to the governor, keep that in there. That's, that doesn't require any work, other than a little bit of communication. It's written already. But if we're talking about something broader, then we need to figure out what we want to say. The other thing is, many years ago, this council asked the attorney general to bring litigation against towns that have, that are not in compliance with the existing statute, because they were unlawfully, their ordinances, their zoning ordinances unlawfully had said things like, no mobile home parks. Well, that's plainly contrary to 8-2, because there might be, there's, 8-2 allows for certain kinds of discrimination, but it doesn't permit prohibiting mobile home parks. We actually, and this is like in the 1990s, we asked the attorney general to stop, make them stop doing that. We could decide we'd like to ask the attorney general again to do that. And he, because he didn't do it. I mean, it was, that was a request from us. But what I'm trying to get to is, we need to have a conversation, which we could do right now if we want, as to start figuring out how to do that. Do we want the legislature in 2026 to do some amendment other than the one that's in 5002? And if so, what is the amendment that we want? And is it something we can all agree on? I think the answer will be yes, if we put some time into it. I don't know that we can have that conversation today, especially if we're trying to scan our way through, you know, a much longer list. But I would put this, I would say we ought to have follow-up within the next 30 days among ourselves. And I would put on that for follow-up, that's to say, a detailed approach, not just some general conceptual approach. I would put this item on that as something, as a potential, as a potential consensus item, if we could figure out how to write it. So that's, I mean, that's my suggestion, that's why I think, that's why I thought we were having this meeting.
Yes, I, I think we're, I think, you know, again, I apologize. I, it's been a very busy day for me. I think that we're all in agreement, that is why we're having this meeting. Mark Berkowitz, you actually had your hand up. So if everyone, I think going forward, just hit your little, raise your hand if you want to talk. Mark, you, you had it up and you took it down. All right, do you, do you want to talk?
Yeah, I, I, first, I want to apologize for coming on late. I was having problems with one laptop, so I went to another laptop. And I can't show my face, for whatever reason, my camera is not allowing me to access that. I appreciate Rafi's comments, but Rafi, please understand that while we can work on this one particular issue, it, it's, it's a non-issue if we continue to pursue rent caps. And I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. Because you're not going to find a developer anywhere who's going to want to build a, a new mobile home park if he's constrained by what he can charge moving forward to cover his expenses of a new development. So while I see Ken, you, you shaking your head in disagreement, that's a reality. And why would a developer build a new mobile home park when rent caps are in place in the state of Connecticut? It makes absolutely no sense if they can't cover their expenses. And so the industry will die, and it will continue to, I mean, I mean, look at the last 20 years, how many new mobile home parks have come into the state of Connecticut, have been built new? Anyone?
I don't know the, I don't know the answer.
Well, Mark, so two, you're going to say maybe five, maybe five were built.
Okay, so maybe, maybe five.
And small, too.
All right. And some of them had to go through the, you know, very expensive pre-build to even get approvals, right? So if you have that along with rent caps, who are we fooling here? I'm, I'm, I'm a developer, I've done work in the past. Anybody here, mobile home park owners, want to build a mobile home park in a state that has rent caps? Let's just be honest.
Liz, a couple hands are up.
All right, all right, hang on.
Let's be honest, I know it's, so that's, that's, you know, if we're going to have an honest discussion here, let's just put everything out in the open. I'm not going to waste my time going after towns are trying to get zoning law change, which is a humongous task, which, you know, maybe we could do something there, maybe not, but we haven't been very successful in this state. But why go any further? That's my question and challenge to, to this council.
Okay, Rafi, you have your hand up next, and then Dave, you're be, after him.
All right. I guess I want to say something about it in two ways. The first is, if we want to be able to work collaboratively, and our position is that any, that, that any of us have a position on an issue, that if we don't have unanimity, then we're not going to talk about the issue. Then we're back to where we are, were last year. That was the source of the problem, that there was, there was, that people felt that because there was an issue that they were, that we were totally divided on, that they didn't want to talk about any issues, even ones where we're in agreement. And if that's the position that members, I hope, Mark, I think you were simply wrong to take that position. And if that's the position you take, then that does destroy the council. And so I think that is a mistake. I think we have to look for the things of agreement, recognizing that there can be some issues on which we will disagree. And that one issue should not decide whether or not we can talk about the other issues. If that's, if people are saying, oh, nope, as long as there's one issue we have disagreement on, then we don't talk about any issues. The second thing is, we haven't even gotten to the part of the agenda where we talk about the very issue that you were saying is the obstacle that keeps you from being willing to talk about anything. The, the, the item on the, the closest thing to it on the item, on the agenda, is item six on the agenda, which is not a rent cap proposal. So it's, and it's a law that's in existence in Vermont. So that if, if we, why that issue from last year would be something we are talking about when it's not? would be something we are talking about when it's not even on the agenda and you're using as the basis for why you don't want to talk about any issues? Makes, Mark, I'm sorry, that just makes no sense. But if that's where people are, no, no, Mark, if that's where people are, if that's where the, 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 the out, the result from last year is that nobody wants to talk about anything, then everybody's on their own. Well, the people will do what we want. But part of the complaint last year was, we didn't have these conversations and it led us into a high conflict approach, which was ultimately wasn't in anybody's interest by the time the session got over. So it would seem to me that we would go through the list. We would try and figure out where there was most consensus. We would talk to each other even about the items of disagreement and acknowledge that the other people had different views. I can certainly argue to you why I think this is not going to keep people from starting. That we're not proposing, nobody's proposing anything that's going to keep people from, from new parks. But the, ultimately, this is a process kind of meeting to say that we are trying to get back on the track about talking about these things. And so we'll get to that issue and we will talk about it. And if, that's where I am on this. And I, and I'm just, I just think you need to set aside some of the stuff from last year, which both sides, if we treat these as sides, both sides have bad feelings from last year. And move on to, to how we can do things together.
All right, Rafi, Rafi, if I may, if I may just reply, I mean, first of all, rent caps is not a small issue. That's, that's a huge issue.
It's not on the list, Mark, it's not on the list.
No, no, let me finish, let me finish, please.
We know what the Vermont.
I, I know, I know we're going to get there and I appreciate that. And I know, I also know what the council is charged to do, which is to promote the industry. And you are not going to find, I'm just being honest, you are not going to find a developer. We're talking about zoning, right? That's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
And you're, you're, you're accusing me of trying to conflate two different issues or bring in another issue when it talk, when we talk about zoning. It's more than appropriate, Rafi, to bring up the fact, if you have rent caps, regardless of what the zoning is, you're not going to grow the industry. You're not going to find developers or current owners who are going to want to build new mobile home parks. And I just challenge, and I put out there that challenge to the folks that are on the call, who I want to hear differently. I, I need to be convinced. Because if we're going to spend a lot of time and effort and energy into working on the zoning issue, which I do think is, is a, is a big impediment to development of mobile home parks in the state, we have to talk about the issue of rent caps.
Okay.
And I know, I know we're not going to call it a rent cap, but, and, and I apologize for being so adamant about this. But I think we can all sit here and pretend, but you wanted to have an open and honest discussion. And I think that's what we're doing, Rafi, rather than just kind of, you know, moving along these issues where we can agree on a few things and not disagree on other issues. But if we're going to talk about zoning, let's, let's talk about zoning and, and what it means for growth of the industry in the state of Connecticut.
All right, I'm going to move on to Dave because we, we have a lot of things on the list. Dave, you're up next, and Marcia, you are after Dave. I see everybody's hand. So if you raise your hand, I'm watching. So Dave, let's try to, going forward, we gotta try to keep it kind of short.
Got you. That's, I was just going to say, I have a lot to say here. I'll try to keep it brief. Okay. This is another meeting where in the first 10 minutes of the meeting, we've had park owners say basically, if we're not going to talk about anything, if we don't, if we don't get this, we're going to take our ball and go home. That doesn't, that's not going to work. I, we tried, I tried to identify, and I got some other stuff that I think park owners would be interested in hearing about infrastructure. But if you're going to take the attitude that if we don't, if we don't get exactly what we want, we're going to, we're not going to, it's not worth, it's not worth having a hearings going forward. You know, that, that, we're not, we're not going to go anywhere. So, and as far as the, the, the claim that parks can't be developed with, with what we have, our idea, I disagree with that. And I know that some of the people in this meeting operate parks in other jurisdictions that have some form of rent cap, either it's your statewide basis or, or local municipalities. And they don't close and they don't go, they don't go away. And it's beyond my, my comprehension that you can argue that some of these out of state park owners that are jacking up the prices and while, whilst, while people in this room can get by and make money at a lower rate, something has to be done about that, and that's what we're trying to address. And finally, you guys don't even know, the park owners do not know the statute that we submitted to the state legislature last year was not a rent cap. Okay, that statute that got, that got brought up and went through committee and voted on was not what we submitted. And I, and I would, and that, the people that were driving it got ahead of steam of their own. I told them it wasn't going to work, and I'm not going to discuss names, but that's not what we submitted. And what we, what we're talking about.
That's interesting, Dave, because you wore a shirt that said vote yes on it. So it's interesting that it wasn't what you wanted, but you had no problem wearing a shirt saying to vote for it there.
That's true. You're right. But that's not what we submitted. What am I, what was I supposed to do? Tell the legislators? I can't tell the legislators what to do. They, they brought up and voted what they wanted. I'll go into it, I'll tell you about it off, off camera, Mark, how exactly how it went down. Okay. So I'd, I'd rather move on and see if you want to have a discussion on other important issues, including some infrastructure. But, you know, we have to be able to agree to disagree on issues that, that we can't get consensus on. But if you don't, if you don't have the discussion, we don't know.
Marcia, you're up.
Excellent. I managed to turn myself or my voice on. So I want to go back to again, the statute about the advisory council and what they should do, which is to monitor the implementation of statutes and regulations affecting mobile manufactured homes. Product, promote them in the state, conduct a public education and improve their perception. We've gotten away from what the advisory council is supposed to do. They're supposed to look at proposed legislation. You're supposed to discuss it. Before, then maybe you have a group of park owners that say, hey, this is great, or a group of tenants that say, this is great. And then you're, you, you've got that fighting. You want the input of all the different entities on this advisory council. My other comment is going to be, you know, don't, don't tell me about rent caps and don't tell me about rent regulations. I have three parks in another state that are rent controlled, they're hell. I can't do infrastructure repairs. I can't run those parks the way I want to because the town rent control board, who the chairman wanted to be on the arts committee, has no idea how to run, read a balance sheet, does not want to approve the expenses. And it's like tough luck, come again next year or the year after. So that's, that's my comments on what the advisory council should be doing and anything on, on rent contracts and more rent control. Thank you for listening.
Okay. I think we talked about that. Has no other comments. I think I'd like to move on to the next issue. Is that okay with everybody?
Al's got his hand up.
I got my hand up.
Oh, 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 sorry, Al. I didn't see it. Okay, go ahead, Al.
I'm not, I'm not going to phrase the question criticizing any side over here. I'd like to have somebody start thinking about, yeah, things are tough financially everywhere. But when you get the outside investors coming in from out of state, not including the people on this call. Yeah, what are you supposed to do for the people who are living in these communities that have figured out their finances and figured they can retire? And all of a sudden, somebody comes in from Texas or Florida or wherever they are, buys a community from somebody and jacks the rent up four or $500 to start with. And these people have to turn around and go back to work because they can't afford to stay in that community, retired. So, you know, how do you suggest that we all get together and sign out some way of controlling these situations where people are just losing their investments?
Anybody? Mark, Mark Asness, you're up.
So Al, so I, I appreciate what you're saying there. And my feeling is that's what the rent commissions were built for, right? So the rent commissions have just barely started getting their feet together. I know Rafi's trained the rent commission in North Wyndham because his name was all over the, the latest thing, right? So Stonegate just had their rents reduced by $200. Isn't that what this was built for? Why aren't we letting the existing state laws work themselves through? And before we're instituting another one just for mobile home parks? You know, it was said to me somewhere, whether it was on a call, that you need a special mobile home park one because rent commissions don't understand mobile home parks. That's a ridiculous statement. There's income and expenses, whether it's an apartment building or a mobile home park. It's the same. We have expenses. And by the way, I'm an out of state investor myself, right? I own parks in Mass, now less because I can't, Massachusetts is so terrible. I sold three out of the four communities that we own. I own parks in Ohio and I own a park in Rhode Island. I'm out of state.
Okay.
Uh, uh, but I run my parks the best way I can based upon the expenses that are thrown at me. So you, you're bringing up a great point, Al. People from out of state, including myself, will buy parks in other states. If you're a bad actor, and I'm not saying Stonegate is or isn't, I don't know what their financials are or what it cost to build. But you guys never ask, what, do you know that my rates are all doubling this year? Because all my loans are adjustable? And so now my rate is going to 6% on all of my loans, which means my payment is double? Nobody ever asks us what the expenses are. Does anybody care that my property taxes are up 60% in North Wyndham, but my rent's only up 27%? My water and sores up 200% in Killingley at $90 a home? So nobody ever wants to know the details, but the rent commissions were put in place for just this reason, to, to grab the ones that you're talking about. But when you guys introduce legislation that is for the masses, including me and Mark and Marcia and Miriam and all the other guys that I serve with, we're all local guys doing the best we can. But you want to introduce legislation that rounds up everybody to just go after the people that you're talking about. And that's just unfair. And I know Rafi didn't agree, but I'm 100% in agreement with what Mark's saying, is that if you're going to introduce anything that makes it harder to run my business, whether it's a cap, an arbitration, a regulation, or something where I have to go in front of a board where all of my residents sit in a room and tell me what a piece of crap I am because I need to fix the septic systems on 20 lots and it's going, it's going to be a half a million dollars. I have no interest in working on anything else that's on Liz's list because I will have to expel all of my energy to defend myself against that one bill. That's it.
Okay, so. Next, let's try to, Rafi, you're up next, if we could try to keep it fairly short. That would be great.
Liz, I want to suggest that it would make sense for us to jump on the agenda to item six. Because what I'm hearing is people say that as long as item six is on our agenda, they don't want to talk about anything else.
I was actually thinking the same thing, Rafi.
So maybe we should talk about it because I think some of us disagree with what is being said about item six. And maybe we need to get that disagreement in the open. If you want to do that, then I have something I want to say about item six.
Okay, so, item six, let me get to item six here.
I'm taking my, I'm, I'm taking my hand down.
Okay. All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we're going to skip down to, actually, it's number five, isn't it?
Well, I'm looking at the agenda I have. I don't know. It's, it's the one that's entitled rent.
So yeah, yeah, the first one is transparent. So you're correct. So we're going to move on and we're going to go to item six, which is rent regulation. And proposed rent mediation statute modeled on existing Vermont law. At the last meeting, councillor, council member Delory noted that the alliance plans to reintroduce a bill on and on modeled on Vermont's mandatory mediation law regarding rent increases. And we said further discussion will take place at the next meeting. So who would like to go first? Rafi, your hand is raised. I will give you the floor.
All right. I mean, first, first of all, I want to say, this is not my proposal. This is, you know, the, the people know I work with the, with the, the residence alliance. And so I have some sense of what, of what's going on from the alliance. And I mean, Dave can better speak to the alliance. But what I want to say is something about what the Vermont law is. The Vermont law is not a rent cap law, in my opinion. The rent, it is a mandatory mediation law. And so as a start, I want to tell people what the law says. Basically, what the law, and this has been a Vermont law for, I don't know, 30 years or something. It's not something new in Vermont. Basically, what it says is, if the residents get together and create an association that has at least half the, the homes covered by the association, sort of like the standard on the right of first refusal law, which uses similar kind of approach, then they have the right, if a rent increase is proposed, that is more than a certain amount. They don't have a right, if the rent increase proposed is very small. But if it's more than, and I believe that's where they, that is where the CPI plus 1% came from, from that statute. If it is more than that amount, they have a right to, for mediation with the park owner, that is, that the park owners must agree to mediation. Mediation is not arbitration. Mediation means structured, structured negotiation. The, the, as I understand the Vermont statute, it actually requires that the, what would effectively be the Department of Consumer Protection here to actually maintain a list of licensed mediators and the names, and the mediator has to be drawn from that list. The, and there's a requirement essentially to engage in the mediation. If the mediation is successful, then it will result in essentially a modified rent proposal. Because by definition, you're only going into the mediation if you're, if you're proposing an increase of more than a certain amount. If the mediation is unsuccessful, if it is successful, also, it has the advantage that's a difference from, say, something like a fair rent commission because it will apply to the whole park. So it gets rid of this problem of, of different rents for different people. Because you end up with a, a park wide agreement because they're dealing with an association of tenants, not with individual tenants. If, if there is, if there is, if there's ultimately no, no agreement, then there is a provision in which the resident association could go to court to try and challenge. But otherwise, the park owner's increase goes into effect. It turns out, when we tried to get information from Vermont as to how this actually works in practice and why we are told people don't have a problem with it, is that in practice, it tends to keep the rent increases below CPI plus 1%, even though there's no law that says you have to. Because the park owners would much rather deal with the, just do it, hold the increase down and not have to deal with the mediation process. But when you do have mediations, you normally get a solution. They normally work something out. And so the statute become, has its, essentially is self enforcing. If it is, in my opinion, first of all, it's worth exploring that. That doesn't mean people have to say, let's copy them exactly word for word. It's worth exploring that. And it, there may well be some version of that that might be acceptable to everybody. Maybe there won't be. I mean, maybe that comes in if the park residents want to go and run with it legislatively. People will have to, in the end, the, the, the park owners will oppose it. But it's not at all the same as the bill last year, which was a rent cap bill. This is simply not a rent cap bill. And so to say, we don't want to talk about it because we don't want to talk about rent caps is, in my opinion, not relevant. If the argument is, well, but it induces people to hold down rent increases even though it doesn't require them to hold down rent increases. Yeah, that is probably true. But it doesn't seem to me that necessarily should be as offensive to the, to the industry as a rent cap would be. And it, so I think it's worth considering. You know, people may have different opinions. We may never reach an agreement on it. Okay, that's all right. That can happen. But the point is, it's something, I don't understand why we wouldn't talk about it. And I don't understand why a disagreement on that item should interfere in any way with talking about the other items on the list. And so that's my understanding of what the Vermont law is. It's not my understanding that anybody on the council, at this point at least, It's not my understanding that anybody on the council, at this point at least, is planning on going to the legislature with last year's bill. So we're talking, I mean, it's like we're making up a ghost of some sort to, to, to block doing what our job would be. Marcia's, I mean, it seems to me, by the way, I don't understand if Marcia was saying this is beyond our jurisdiction as a council. That's, it's clear, I think it's clear, that our mission, and it's always been our mission since the statute was created in the 1980s or whatever, that we talk about legislative stuff, that that's within the framework of talking of our, of our authority to implement, implementation of statutes and regulations affecting mobile home parks. So I, you know, I don't think anybody's ever said before that it's not something that we ought to be doing as part of our mission. Part of our mission is promoting mobile home parks, but part of it is also doing the main thing the department does, which is protecting residents. So I, I guess, I'm still trying to argue this is worth talking about. And if today is not the day to have the actual conversation about the Vermont proposal, then again, we have another meeting, or we break, send it out to a subcommittee or something. But that's where I think we are. And I think it is, that by mislabeling, this is, is rent cap, it then leads to kind of this, well, then we don't want to talk about it. But it's not, but that's not even what the proposal is. So I don't, you know, I don't, I understand people's anger from last year. I do not understand what is, what's on this list. Half the items on this list are things that I would think the park owners would support anyway. And, you know, without, and certainly the zoning stuff, everybody's going to support. And I think with a little creativity on our part, we can do things, we can propose stuff that might have some, some impact on the ability of people to create new parks through, through, you know, through better zoning. So that's.
Okay.
On item six, that's where I am. We can, yeah, I'm happy to see us talk about it more if you want.
So Dave Delory is up next, then Marcia, and then Mark Berkowitz. And I'm going to ask everyone to try to keep it on point. We don't need to go back and talk about other things. Let's keep it on this issue, which is rent.
Rafi's pretty much said what I have to say. I'm going to defer my time to whoever's next in line. I think it's Mark has.
All right, Marcia, you're up.
Thank you. Rafi, I think you misunderstood what I said. Um, I did not say it was beyond our jurisdiction. I literally read to you from the statute at what the advisory council should be doing. And that's to monitor the implementation of statutes and regulations affecting mobile home park. I did not say it was beyond our jurisdiction. And that's what it sounded like. That's not what I meant. Thank you.
And Mark Berkowitz, you're up next.
Yeah, so my comment is, um, trying to think how to, the phrase this. I understand why you're trying to use this statute. But again, why not let the fair rent commissions do what they're intended to do? Now, I know there's a couple issues Rafi, and you brought up one, which is they go individually, tenants go individually to a fair rent commission. And there's not a fair rent commission in every town where there's a bad actor. You'll find, and you'll, if you came to any of our meetings, that the folks that are bad actors in Connecticut, the investors, out of state investors, as I think Al called them, which is, is accurate. Um, when we hear that they're charging an, an odd amount of rent, that, that troubles us. That troubles us. That doesn't do anyone any good in the industry when we see somebody's charging $800 now, or, um, you know, we have a few folks in Clinton, and we have the folks out in North Wyndham. But we just saw what the North Wyndham Commission was able to do. Um, I don't agree with their ruling in its entirety, but why jump to this? I mean, without even letting these commissions work? All that's going to do is, you know what that's going to force the industry to do to a certain extent? And I'm looking out for the tenant interests here. It's going to cause other people to put their parks on the, on the market? And who are they going to sell to? They're going to sell to potentially out of state investors. If my hands are tied on how much I can charge, and I know Rafi, this, this, this particular uh, format that they have in Vermont, could resolve some of that. I'm going to sell, I just sold one of my communities to somebody from New York. He knows what rents are in New York, he sort of knows what they are in Connecticut. But that's going to tie our hands and you're going to find more community owners, some of these smaller guys like myself, selling. And we're not going to sell to the lowest bidder. So now you're going to have more out of state investors in Connecticut, who have less interest in keeping the rates stable. But let the commissions work. Because you don't want those out of state investors coming in the state anyway, because the more people that you can continue to have, I mean, they operate very differently than some of our, our smaller guys. So I'm just saying that as a, kind of a heads up to the tenants, be careful what you wish for. But the commissions work. You guys, you guys did a good job getting that on the books. If that means, um, you know, I don't know in Clinton, if, if they have 20,000 people who live there, if they have 15,000, you know what? I wouldn't be happy that you're lowering the threshold for commissions, but that's a way to resolve this. So why do you have to go from rent commissions to a rent cap or pseudo rent cap right away? Let the commissions work.
Dave, I, Dave, I see your hand. And if Mark's done, I'm actually, I raised my hand and because I haven't spoken yet, I'm going to, I'm going to speak. So my question, listening to everybody here is, I know that all municipalities in Connecticut are not required to have fair rent commissions. But couldn't the state require it? So, so this, this is my question. Instead of putting it in mobile manufactured home statutes, why then couldn't the state expand its fair rent commission requirement? So Dave, you're up next. That's my question.
Well, in my opening remarks this morning, I, I threw it on a table that there's, there's interest in the legislature. I can tell you, this I do know. I don't know what form it's going to take. But there is, there is talk, a lot of it, about changing the fair rent commission laws. And perhaps using it on, on, based on some sort of regional basis or statewide, only to mobile home parks. And so.
Why only mobile?
I'm not, I'm not going to lie. It would not be my first choice, because here in Southington, where I live, the mobile home park, we, we got them to do a fair rent commission as soon as, um, as soon as it became required under, under the 25,000 threshold from a couple of years ago. And what did the, what did the town council do? One of the minority members is a woman who spoke against having to create a fair rent commission, having to reduce the threshold. She's now the minority member of the commission. So where do you think we're going to get with it? Not that I even think it's warranted and selected. So, but I think Liz begs, states the obvious question. And if, if, Mark, if you're saying that let the fair rent commissions, um, um, do their work? And you don't want the Vermont law? Would the park owners be willing to get behind something that we can all talk about and figure out so that everybody in a mobile home park in Connecticut has a right to go before some sort of a, I would argue, regional fair rent commission?
Rafi, your hand's up next, Mark, but you, your hand's still raised. So did you want to respond quickly to Dave? All right, so we're going to move along to Rafi and trying to keep everyone as close to three minutes as I can. So let's, let's do the best we can, folks.
All right. I would just note that the two concepts are not incompatible with each other. The Vermont law, the Vermont law essentially says, let's create an opportunity for the park residents and the park owners to negotiate with each other before you would need to go to a fair rent commission. So that, you know, you can, it's possible to build it, to build in a structure in those places where you have an organized park residence, where, where, before you would go to a fair rent commission, which people would have to go to individually, and that, that you go through the mediation process. And the odds are probably pretty high that the mediation process results in an, in agreement, which then means nobody has to go to a fair rent commission. On the other hand, you necessarily would need to preserve the availability in the absence of, of essentially the agreed, an agreement through the structure. Let's call it the Vermont structure through mediation. In the absence of agreement, then, then maybe, then people are on their own to go to a fair rent commission. So they're not two incompatible approaches.
Right, but why would you need, why would you need to have that extra step, Rafi?
Because, because in the absence of the ability to, to negotiate, I mean, why do they have a mediation statute? It's because in the absence of the ability to negotiate and a mechanism for doing it, then you have, then everybody's all or nothing. The park owner says, I want X number of dollars. The residents say, no way, we're against it completely. And then so you want to fight it. If your town has a fair rent commission, then, then you fight it at the fair rent commission. And if you've got 100 units in, of, in your mobile home park, 100 people are going to have to file fair rent complaints. Or, you know, if 50 of them file complaints, but not the other 50, then the fair rent commission structure, your decision will apply to the 50 who, who filed the complaints and that. I mean, there are ways to deal with that, so you can avoid those problems. And it seems to me, again, we should talk this through, but it seems to me that, that the Vermont proposal is not harmful to that. It's you can, you can meld them together in a way that works. The, Dave is completely right that there's been talk, not coming from, from us, but there's been talk from many legislators that they want their towns to have fair rent commissions. But as a practical matter, small towns don't have the resources and the capability to do it. That then argues for, for regional commissions, at least at the small town level, can, then who's going to run them? So then that led to discussion of there being of, of the councils of government providing staffing. That leads to questions, well, who's going to pay for the staff? I mean, those, those ideas are out there. They're not coming from, necessarily from mobile home parks. You conceivably could have a separate structure for mobile home parks only. That would be, that's a very different proposal, but it could make use of fair rent commissions. I mean, there are ways to talk about these things and there are alternative approaches. And, you know, different people may disagree on what the best approach is. I, I think that it's, you know, fair rent commissions have existed since the late 1960s. And so while it's absolutely true that there are a whole bunch of new ones coming, and in 5002, if it were to be reestablished with lower, the threat, the mandatory threshold from towns of 25,000 and more to towns of 15,000, that would not pick up Clinton. But well, Clinton already has fair rent commission, but it would, it would not pick up, you know, half the towns in the state that are, that are smaller than that. But, you know, but there've been, there have been certainly proposals from various legislators saying they want all towns to have to do this. And it's, it's, I just think it's something that's worth a discussion. And I think, I think it's legitimate to, I think it's legitimate to say, well, if, if there can be fair rent commissions, why, why would we want Vermont? That's a fair discussion. That's, but again, I'm, all I'm trying to indicate is that it is not irrational for someone like me to say, you can do both. And that you're not going to kill, you're not going to kill the system over both. And it's for, it's, it's, you know, I would welcome the opportunity to talk with park owners about that, rather than, I just don't want it to be thrown off the table without any further discussion on the assumption there's only one side to the issue. I mean, I think, I agree. I agree with all this stuff, that there's more than one side to, to all issues. And you're always balancing, you know, it's legitimate to say, nobody will buy a park. Okay? When you talk about it, I don't agree with that. But I understand reasonable people can disagree. That's, I'm coming from the notion that reasonable people can disagree about things and also could sit down and talk about them. And, and that these things are all within the range of room for, 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 for reason, to find agreement. So, again, I don't know that we're, a complete discussion of this is going to take, we're going to end, you'll end up spending 45 minutes on one issue. And so this meeting is not a way to get a complete discussion. It's only a way to have, open the transparency of saying, these are things that are being considered. Here's why some people might think they're a good idea. Here's why some people might think they're a bad idea.
Well, Rafi, if not now, when, when do you suggest this discussion should be? Yeah, let me finish now, because one thing that everyone on this commission has said they want to increase transparency, and by doing, having special meetings, and everybody who has been invited has the chance to attend, when would you suggest these discussions happen? And I'm going to say, and, and Al, I do see your hand raised, so you're up next. You know, one thing that, that municipal staff run into is, there's always seems to be a new regulatory hoop that someone has to jump through. So my question is, why couldn't an existing fair rent statute, and I don't know if that's what it's called, why couldn't that be revised? So, okay, maybe you don't have to have individual park residents. Maybe they can revise the statute to say individual, you know, owners or, you know, a certain number of residents of the park, a majority or something. Why couldn't you take what you already have and try to fix it to make it work so that there's, you know, like you said, maybe, maybe one doesn't hurt the other, but why have the extra hoop to jump through if there's a way that's already in place and they could change it so that all towns have fair rent commissions? I think all towns, if, if you mandated for population 25,000 plus, why not mandate it for everybody? That's all I'm saying. Al, you're up.
Okay, so I was talking to my state senator about the fair rent commissions, because I was bugging him originally when he came up with the idea for 20,000 plus. And I gave him the examples of certain towns that really need some help as far as that goes. And last time I talked to him, like, two weeks ago, he was very interested in trying to look into some kind of solution that he could get behind as far as a fair rent commission for the entire state. Whether it meant a regional thing or pairing small towns with larger towns. I'm not sure he told me that exactly, but he is interested in trying to find a way to include everybody.
Okay, Dave, you're up next. Have your hand raised again?
Yep.
And then I want, yeah, so, so, okay, go ahead. And then I want to get back to you.
Rafi's pretty much said what I have to say. I'm going to defer my time to whoever's next in line. I think it's Mark has.
All right, Marcia, you're up.
Thank you. Rafi, I think you misunderstood what I said. Um, I did not say it was beyond our jurisdiction. I literally read to you from the statute at what the advisory council should be doing. And that's to monitor the implementation of statutes and regulations affecting mobile home park. I did not say it was beyond our jurisdiction. And that's what it sounded like. That's not what I meant. Thank you.
And Mark Berkowitz, you're up next.
Yeah, so my comment is, um, trying to think how to, the phrase this. I understand why you're trying to use this statute. But again, why not let the fair rent commissions do what they're intended to do? Now, I know there's a couple issues Rafi, and you brought up one, which is they go individually, tenants go individually to a fair rent commission. And there's not a fair rent commission in every town where there's a bad actor. You'll find, and you'll, if you came to any of our meetings, that the folks that are bad actors in Connecticut, the investors, out of state investors, as I think Al called them, which is, is accurate. Um, when we hear that they're charging an, an odd amount of rent, that, that troubles us. That troubles us. That doesn't do anyone any good in the industry when we see somebody's charging $800 now, or, um, you know, we have a few folks in Clinton, and we have the folks out in North Wyndham. But we just saw what the North Wyndham Commission was able to do. Um, I don't agree with their ruling in its entirety, but why jump to this? I mean, without even letting these commissions work? All that's going to do is, you know what that's going to force the industry to do to a certain extent? And I'm looking out for the tenant interests here. It's going to cause other people to put their parks on the, on the market? And who are they going to sell to? They're going to sell to potentially out of state investors. If my hands are tied on how much I can charge, and I know Rafi, this, this, this particular But you never want to listen to or pick things that, well, why don't you, why don't you propose that Mass, that the state of Connecticut doesn't charge property taxes for mobile homes? That'll save the residents money. Why are my property taxes in Massachusetts, half of the property taxes that the state of Connecticut charges? You, you're, you're only proposing things that are going to be difficult for community owners to run their community like rent arbitration when something else exists. So to answer your question, Dave, I'm happy to look at a not a new rent arbitration law or whatever Rafe called it, I apologize, I'm having a brain cramp. Mediation, thank you, rent mediation. And we can look to see how the, the existing rent commissions are, are operating. And, but I also wanted to be fair. So, for instance, Rafe went in and trained the rent commission in, for Stonegate, right, for North Wyndham. Nobody ever called me, President of the Association, on the Advisory Council. I own a park in North Wyndham, but nobody called us to, to train the rent commission on how it is for park owners to operate. So if you're going to propose the, what you're saying, Dave, which I am somewhat in agreement with, and I'm not, and I can't speak for every park owner. So I'd have to go, you know, out to everybody. But it has to be fair where that if they're getting trained, that the training can't come from one side. Right? And and I don't know if you're aware, that commission hearing, somebody on the commission, a woman, I don't know her name, basically said on the record, I don't know why anybody would live in a mobile home park. So is that what we trained somebody to understand that they can't understand why? This is somebody who is, who is changing potentially the operation and livelihood of a company, said they couldn't understand why somebody would live in a mobile home park. So.
Well, I, I'm going to.
I'm all for, Dave, Dave, to answer your question, I'm sorry, I went off tangent and you, you caught me on it and I appreciate it. I, I, I would be happy to look at something like that. I, I'd be happy to look at it, bring it back to the, my board and then bring it out to the membership to see what everybody thinks. But I'm just not interested in recreating or creating a new division of rent mediation. When the state just passed a law for rent commissions just a couple of years ago, and everybody knows they need to be expanded. I, I'm in agreement that it should apply. What do I care? We're not hiding because we're in a small community. If, if we have it in North Wyndham, I need to have it in Ashland, so be it, so be it. It is what it is. I'm okay with having every town have one.
I'm not, okay, just to be, just to be clear, we're talking about to try to create fair and commissions that were, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be a huge impediment. Nobody knows what this legislature is contemplating on expansion of fair and commissions. Al just said something about a statewide commission for everybody. I, I don't know if that's what they're thinking. But we're talking about changing the law so that every resident that rents land in a mobile home park in Connecticut has access to a fair rent commission i- if they feel aggrieved. And I'm, and you know, I'm fine, I, Rafe, you can, you can, Rafe, you will have to speak to what the, how the training goes. But we do have somebody, somebody who was in the room in that Wyndham meeting that can answer questions about about what might have gone on there, might not have gone on there. But I'd like to hear from Dan because he's going through it. And I think he has maybe some math calculations that might be interesting in the, in the overall picture of, of how much a rent increase of CPI plus one percent would be at a three P, at a three percent CPI. I don't know if you.
Well, I just want to, I just want to go on the record of saying is, if you're proposing anything that CPI plus one, Berkowitz said at the beginning of all this stands that we will just, it just, it doesn't work. It's seventeen dollars in a, in a time where property taxes, water, soar, labor, insurance is up thirty eight percent. You know, you, no one wants to regulate against the state or the, or PURA or Connecticut water. But everybody wants to regulate against the landlords. Everybody gets to take the money but us.
I, I got it, Mark, I got it.
Yeah, I, I think, Dave, to answer your question, and I do see your hand up, Rafe. The question is, is there common ground in talking about instead of creating a mandatory mediation for mobile manufactured home parks for rent regulation? The question I have is, is there a common ground that instead of that, having to jump through another hoop, that this council could work towards legislation that would expand the current fair rent commission? I'm not, and I, and I don't portray that I know everything about it, Rafe, because you're probably already thinking she doesn't know anything about it. And I don't know a lot about it. But my question is, instead of, you know, arguing over whether this should be this mediation, mandatory mediation, why not work together to, with the legislator to expand the fair rent commission? So that mobile manufactured home parks in any size municipality that, that those folks could use that fair rent commission? So that's the question I have is, is there anybody that thinks we could have some common ground on this? Not getting into CPI point one, plus one, not getting into the, the, the legislation of twenty twenty five? Is this something the council thinks they can work towards as a group? So that's, I guess that was my question, Dave, is because, you said that you would be, your mind could be changed. Instead of going with the Vermont law, could we work towards fixing what we already have?
I think I've already stated my answer. I, I, I'm willing to be convinced. But my attitude about whether we bring forward a proposal for the Vermont law, a lot of it is going to depend on the answer to the question that you just put that I'd like to, I'd like the park owners to respond to.
Okay, and Rafe, you, you are.
This is, yeah, so.
All right, Mark, go ahead and Rafe, I'll get to you.
Like Mark asked us, I would, I could agree to sitting down with the folks on the council to discuss some expansion of the fair rent commission. Absolutely, because, you know, in my mind, I sit here and, believe it or not, park owners, and I'm just going to just take one minute, care about the tenants in their community. And one of the results of if there's a rent cap is community owners are no longer going to put as much investment in their communities as they once have. It's just an inevitability. You could look at any state that's had rent caps. And when the landlord's hands are constrained, you know, the money just isn't there. And unfortunately, the tenants will be the biggest loser, even if you have a rent cap. Because rent caps, we're talking about, you know, maybe we're talking about twenty dollars, thirty dollars, something like that. They're going to lose potentially thousands of dollars on their homes, should they ever go to sell their homes. This is sort of an unprecedented time. And Ken, you may see some of the numbers even in your own community where tenants are getting really nice returns on the sale of their homes. And I've never seen it like this before. And the last thing I would want is to see the tenants not get what fair market value for their home is. And they won't. If, if maintenance in the communities goes down, if roads aren't being fixed, if trees aren't being trimmed, if junk homes are remaining in the communities, because, you know, we can't afford to take them out and put them in dumpsters or get approval to even do that. Get, you know, ownership of those homes. That's another issue on our, on our agenda here. That's going to hurt the tenants in multiples compared to helping them with a rent cap.
Okay, Rafe, you're up next, and then I have Dan Billings, who hasn't spoken yet. So if you'd like to go up, respond, Dan, you are next. And Mark, you, wait, so Mark, you can unraise your hand if you're all set. And Rafe, you're up. And then I have Dan Billings, who Dave actually asked to hear from, so.
All right, I was, I put my hand up because I was trying to answer an earlier question, which was, how are we going to talk about these things? And so, just that you know, historically, the way that this, this has been done, and, and Mark Berkowitz was around for this, as were a few others on the commission. Historically, the way it's been done was, was to have, in the old days, face-to-face subcommittee meetings in which a smaller group of people could work, could sit down and talk about details of any kind of a proposal and whether they could find common ground. And I personally think that that is the way in which you actually get agreement. So it's, everything, devil is always in the details. I mean, just as an example, in light of what we're talking about, for, for example, if fair rent commissions are not designed for group applications, the Vermont law is based on a group application. You could change the fair rent statutes to say that if a certain threshold of people, say fifty percent of the people in a park or in a building jointly ask for, for a fair rent commission to, to, to review a rent increase, then it's going to apply to everybody in the building. That you could make that as a special rule for mobile home parks and not for every apartment building, but for mobile home parks only. That's a big difference. That would, I mean, that, that would be a big change in the fair rent commission statute, but it would solve a mobile home park problem with different, of different, having different units, having different prices for exactly the same land rental. Those are things we, I would think we would talk about. And given that there may be, that this is not the only piece of legislation we might want to talk about, because the legislature is going to come. And the, I mean, and the, we've talked about this as if only residents are going to submit proposals. I don't know if the park owners are going to submit any proposals or not. And so it's the, the, I, I just think that, but, but if we want to, if we want an ongoing process, or the alternative is we do this as a full, as a full group, the entire commission, but then we have more meetings. I mean, we don't, we can't meet through, we can't separate our meetings two or three months apart. We have more, we have more often meeting. One of the reasons for working off of a subcommittee is people on the subcommittee are on it because they're willing to meet more frequently than, than the council as a whole would be willing to meet. So in terms of, so I'm going, I'm just back at that question you originally asked as per.
Thank you.
We do it, okay, we're discussing things now, that's fine. I don't, and, and that's, even if there are subcommittees, the, the group discussion is helpful because it talks about parameters. But I don't think people are going to want to bind themselves to anything today from any perspective, which is fine. But I think the conversation is actually being quite helpful.
Good, okay, Dan, thank you, Rafe, for answering my question. Dan, you're up next.
So as far as what Rafe was talking about, I think that it would be a good thing if we had fifty percent would, would move the commission into accepting it for the entire community. And we started out with three hearings and in that time they heard twenty seven complaints. We now have another, another two hundred. So that's going to mean another hearing. And I think before that is done, there'll be another seventy five or so coming after that. And it's, what's going to happen is we're going to leave out probably the most vulnerable people in our community who won't file a complaint, don't have the capacity to do it, or, or we just haven't been able to reach.
Hey, Dan, what, I'm sorry, what, what community, what town are you in?
North Wyndham, Stonegate.
Oh, you're in Stonegate, okay, I, I'm across the street over at Country Club.
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, and you probably know, we compared ourselves a little bit to the Country Club of States, just.
Yeah, don't do, yeah, don't do that, don't do that. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Your community is much nicer than mine, really. My houses, houses are much closer together than, than yours.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are some differences, but you have some very nice homes over there.
Yeah, we sure do, yeah, we should.
You, you have, you have some of the same problems that we have in our community. And what's happening over here is we not only have higher rents, almost two hundred and fifty dollars higher in some cases. We, we also have a lack of maintenance. We have, we have no, no, no staff in the park at times. So, so we have, we have a lot of things going on over here. We tried, they didn't call it mediation, they called it conciliation, and I'm not sure what the difference is other than that when, when Stonegate's representative showed up, they had nothing to offer, they had no they just wanted to find out what, what we were all about. And like you said, made, made no offer to, to do more maintenance, to add more staff, to lower the fee. So if there was some, some law for mediation, I, I'd be all for it. I'd, I'd like to, to go into discussion with them now, even after we've had a, had a decision. You know, we're not, we're, we're not just against them, we, we want to work with them, but we, we can't get that to happen with them. So I'm in favor of a lot of the legislation that's going forward because the fair rent commission is, is only one step along the way.
Okay, um, okay, anybody else? If not, we can go, go back to item three and, and start talking. One thing I, I will, I would like to say is that the right regulation was tabled to this meeting as was the proposed statute requiring parks to establish inspection programs for onsite fire hydrants and utility poles and write a first refusal statute. And I think that instead of going back to the issues at today's meeting, since it's eleven seventeen already, that we move on to the things that were not discussed at the last meeting. We can meet again, but the rent regulation was one, there was minimal discussion. And the proposed statute requiring parks to establish inspection programs for onsite fire hydrants and utility poles, proposal to require parks to follow local utility standards for inspecting onsite fire hydrants and utility poles. The proposal was prompted by safety concern, in other words, East Hartford propane explosion. Further discussion will take place at the meeting. This was one thing that the owners wanted to discuss, that the first things on the agenda were things that I took from, you know, sort of residents that wanted to discuss. So let's, let's talk about the things that we didn't get to last meeting, if that's okay with everyone. And we'll move to item seven, which is this, this proposed statute regarding utilities. Would anyone like to talk about that? Just put your hand up and we'll go from there.
I'm, I'm trying to get, hold on. I'll put my.
I'm, I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting, so I know which ones we talked about and which ones we did not talk about. So Dave, you're up, your hands up.
Well, this was, I, Rafe, you correct me if I'm wrong, I may be wrong about this. But at some point during the whole session last time, there, the, the because of what hap, primarily because of what happened in, in East Hartford, but also because of my concern in my own park of ancient utility poles, and the, two of which I know have collapsed within the last five years. I know at some point it was part of the legislation. Obviously, none of it made it through, but, you know, I'm trying to get my part right now, ever since the session ended. I've been in contact with the Suddington Water Department after, after this meeting is over. I'm going to call them again because I called them earlier this week because I've talked to Sun Management and they said they're going to look into flushing and testing the fire hydrants. And nobody here can remember ever being done, some of the people that I've talked to are, fire hydrants haven't flushed in forty years. I know most parks don't have them, but for places that do, we wanted, my, our, our proposal, or what I, my thinking on this was that whatever the local water company has for standards, whether it be two years, three years, five years, that mobile home park owners have to be, have to follow the same protocols. So that's where that proposal came from. Quite frankly, I think there was a lot of anger that that didn't make it through last year. And I'd like to know what park owners think about it. There was, there was a lot of anger in the legislature, I think, that that proposal did not make it through, is what I meant to say.
Since Mark, Mark and I are the only, the only two people here. So I think he and I wait to see if the other one speaks first. I, I, I don't, I guess I conceptually do, I don't, I don't have a problem. I, I don't have any fire hydrants in my communities. Like I said, half of my communities run on wells. A lot of parks run on well systems here in the state. So, you know, they couldn't have, could not have one. I pay, again, as an expense that is not recognized, but I pay a fire district tax on all. on all my communities that I have to pay for, to the fire department to just, I guess, have access to them coming to, coming to my park. Why it's not included in my property taxes, I don't know, but I, I don't, I don't see an issue. I don't know what would be, as long as it's, follows the same guidelines as any other, you know, any other required testing period. Like you said, is it a two-year, three-year, five-year? I, I can't see how I, you know, we could get in the middle of saying that we're against it. Again, we had one, one problem caused by a third-party contractor in one town, right, in East Hartford. I've never heard of another one of these things happening. And I'm just very weary of any legislation, whether it's about our business or not, but I get very busy about our business coming up with legislation over one event, right? So. Anyway, but I, I don't see why, unless Mark has anything otherwise, opposite, I, I don't see why we, we would oppose it. And I don't think we opposed it this time, you know, in the, the last time. We didn't come out, we didn't even talk about it. You did it. We saw it. It is what it was. We just said we were gonna let it go.
I mean, that's, that's fine. We're not Okay, that's cool. We have common ground. We're not talking about, we're not talking about having you guys create somehow fire hydrant. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking, and Mark, Mark Asness, by the way, the same park, five years before, had a fire. The fire department came out and the fire hydrants didn't work then either. So it's not just one incident.
Yeah, well, shame, shame on the fire department. You know, shame for the first time, not making sure
They don't have enforcement, the fire, fire department can't enforce that in a, in a private, private piece of property.
But they don't, they can't enforce it, but they can use them? That's interesting.
I, you don't, yeah, look, I'm not, I'm not
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying it's, it's one of those silly things that you hear about that the fire department went to go use them, it didn't work. And then, and then they didn't come up with a plan to say, say, hey, these things have to be in working order.
Let's understand that that one park too, I think it's important for everybody here in the call to understand that they sell oil in propane. Nobody else in the state does that in any of their communities, so they have lines all over the place underground. So I, I, I agree with Mark. I mean, shame on the, this, the municipality for not pushing, you know, something forward sooner. They, part of their job, I think the government's job is to protect its citizens, and they failed there.
Yeah, you're right. I'm, I, that's, and that's also, in my opinion, you know, if that had happened and I was living there five years ago, I'd have raised hell, but that's, that's 2020 hindsight. All we're trying to do is get them to have to follow the same MDC Metropolitan District Water protocols that they have to follow, that the, the town has to follow in, in, in East Hartford. That's it. And, and, and here in Sun Communities, I don't, I doubt it, I don't know whether Sun Communities out in Monville have public water or not, but just any, any
They do.
Park that You know, any park that has fire hydrants needs to follow the protocol of whatever public utility deemed is, is, is proper. That's it. That's all that was in there.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to
I just, I, I have to kind of wrap this up. I didn't realize we're, we're heading to 1130. And I have a question for CJ. Are you still there, CJ? All right, so I see that he's there, but I don't know he's on mute. So one thing that CJ talked about, and I, I think it would be good if we scheduled another meeting. We could do so in two weeks. I don't know who's in favor of being in person. I don't know who's in favor of having a Zoom so-called quote-unquote subcommittee meeting. I mean, there's not that many people here on this meeting, so my question to CJ would be, as we discussed at the last meeting, any meetings should be, have an agenda and should be scheduled. And, and in ledger, when we have subcommittee meetings, there is a date set for meetings, or if the dates aren't set, it's special meeting, any event, there has to be an agenda, and I believe it has to be open to the public. So I know that before, Rafe, in the past, this commission has just had, you know, a group of folks get together and talk about this. But I think CJ brought to our attention at the last meeting that we really have a procedure that we have to follow for scheduling meetings, whether it's a council meeting or if it's a subcommittee meeting. So I would want to speak to him about what his position is on, do we need to draft agendas for subcommittee meetings? Do they need to be recorded? Do they need to have minutes? In legend, they do.
Speak to that a little bit. If it's a subcommittee and you guys aren't a quorum of the board, then there's no, we don't have to post the meeting or do an agenda or take minutes or anything. A subcommittee, if you're below a quorum, then you guys are on your own, so to speak. We don't, we don't post it or anything like that.
Now, Rochelle, is it seven people that's a quorum? We, we determined. How many people is a quorum? Seven or five?
Seven people, so 51% of, of the members.
All right. Okay, so if there were less than seven people, we could have, in fact, a subcommittee meeting without posting an agenda. But if there is a quorum, then if seven people want to get together and sit in a room or sit on a Zoom meeting, then we do have to post the agenda. So before we go, I'd like to hear, you know, everyone's thoughts on that. And you know, I'm looking at two weeks from today would be November 12th. This was like an evening.
Keep in mind, we're meeting on December 3rd as a normal business day, so. And I, I, in November, you got Thanksgiving and stuff like that, so I, I, I don't think I'm gonna be able to make another meeting. And we have one in 30 days. So you know, and by the way, there's nothing wrong with us circulating emails and stuff, right? I mean, if, if someone has an idea, if Dave or Ray, if somebody says, hey, we looked into this, and I, I'm happy to continue conversa, you know, emailing to the group that, you know, this is something I'm interested in, or, you know, before we get to the meeting, so we're not hitting the ground from zero, but we are meeting in four weeks, and I just, I, I, I don't think I can have another meeting two weeks from now.
Okay, all right. So the reason I say that is too, is in, in municipal government, and when you send out emails, they are not supposed to be discussion between the members, which could constitute an actual meeting. So what most folks do is they'll send it to me, and I'll send it to everybody on the council. I'll blind, so here's what I do, because I always ask my commissioners and board members, please don't reply all, right? And then start a whole discussion, and people have, in my experience in the municipal world, said that you're having an illegal meeting by, by everybody talking on an email. So what we may want to do is, what I, what I do to prevent this, because as many times as I say, please do not reply all, they always reply all, and then we get this big discussion. So what happens is, when I send it out, I, I put everyone under BCC. So the only people that they can reply to is me or my staff. So that's another thing, Rochelle, could, could we, if there were less than seven people on it, could we email, or again, do we have to be more cautious of whether we're having a, an email, a meeting, could, emails could constitute a meeting?
Yeah, emails can constitute a meeting if there's discussion. So again, if it's through the whole board, that's a meeting. So you guys have to keep it under forum.
So if, if people wanted to send stuff to me, you could send it to me, and I could send it out to the entire board under blind copy, and then there can't be any discussion between the members, you know, if it's sent out to the full, the full council. So
But I have, but I have the, I have the other, I have the ability to send Rafe and Dave and an email between the three of us, or me and Mark, and right, as long as it's under seven.
As long as it's under seven, you can do it.
I just want to make sure, because we broke a lot of rules then, because
We, we did break a lot of rules. When I first came on this commission, I was a little surprised that, that, because, you know, I've had rules burned into my skull for 28 years, working the municipal side of things, but yeah, so now that CJ's brought it to our attention, I think we have to be a little more cautious. So how about, you know, how many people do we have here today? We have one, two, three, four, five, one, two, six, seven. So you know, leaving out Rochelle and CJ, we have, you know, seven people here to work on a subcommittee. Ben, is this something that you want to do, or do you want to not be on sort of a subcommittee email list?
I'd rather not.
Okay, so without Ben, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, including me is seven. So we could sort of, or we could, you know, do it between Rafe and Ken, Dave's a lorry, and I don't really care. How, how do you guys want to do this? Who's gonna be on this subcommittee type communications? Dave, you're in. Rafe, you're in. Mark, you're in. What about another owner?
Why are you volunteering me? I didn't say I was in.
Yes, you did. You said you can send emails between you and
No, no, I said I had them a pass.
To me, that is a, that, that's a big volunteer. Raise your hand. All right, so I'll tell you what, let's let's just, let's just try to keep it well, and if anyone wants to email stuff to me, I would be happy to email it to everybody else.
That's fine. Just don't overwhelm you. Please don't, don't overwhelm her, because she's
What happened to Marcia?
She had to leave.
Yeah, she had to go. She's in Flor, she's in Florida for, like, her mom's, like, 90-something birthday or something like that.
All right, folks, so I'm, I'm gonna call it for now. It's 1132. Yeah, I know everybody's gotta go, and two hours is a long meeting. Rafe, what do you need?
I just wanted to say this, the, to the extent that we want to talk about I mean, not now, but to the extent to which we want to talk about other things. Agenda mentions one item, which is, which has to do with the right of first refusal. There are a couple of items I'm interested in, which I'm, which the, I don't know that the residents are, but I am. So I just, I don't know if you want me to identify them by topic or
Anybody, when, when Rochelle sends out the draft agenda, you can reply to you can reply to me, you can reply to Rochelle, and you could ask for things to be added, and then when the final agenda comes in, I will say, yep, looks good. And we'll post that. So please feel free to, to contact me to add any items to the agenda. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. All right, everybody. Have a great day. See you in December. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.